We are live and recording.
Good afternoon, everyone. It's a little bit after 2:30. Welcome to our December 6, 2022 land use meeting and public hearing. If you'll all rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Attorney Pratt, do we have certification of the agenda today?
Thank you, Commissioners. Chris Pratt with the Attorney's Office. All three items on your agenda today have been properly noticed. The item 3A, the Meridian International Business Center Preliminary Plan Number 10, project file SB 2021-038, had published notice accomplished on October 13th and signed posted notice accomplished October 18th. And the item 3B, resolution supplementing the 2022 adopted budget to appropriate unanticipated grant revenues and appropriate restricted assigned and unassigned fund balances, and the amount of $39,093,391, had published notice accomplished on November 24th. All of these items are properly noticed, and you have jurisdiction to hear them today.
Okay, thank you, Attorney Pratt. Do any Commissioners have disclosures for items on this agenda today?
I have none.
No, sir.
And I have none either. With that, we'll move to item 2 for our land use meeting agenda items. It's item 2A, land disposal for the Bluffs, First Amendment, tract A1, project file MI 2021-010. We did have Brett Thomas presenting for staff, but we don't have him here right now.
We don't. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Eric Pavlenek for Brett Thomas for Planning Services. The applicant, Reed Edwards, has requested to table this item, which is project file MI 2021-010, which is a land disposal for the Bluffs, First Amendment, tract A1. If the request is scheduled for a future board meeting, written notice of the meeting will be mailed to abutting landowners and all lot owners of the affected subdivision 14 days prior to a board meeting.
Eric, thank you for that. So just, so I'm clear, oftentimes when we hear the Bluffs, people think of the Bluffs Regional Park in unincorporated Douglas County near Lone Tree. That is not this, correct?
That is correct. That's, it's over near my Franktown.
Yep. Just wanted to clarify for the record. Also wanted to make it clear for the record that for whatever reason, our YouTube and audio is down. And so for those that were hoping to be on YouTube, it's not going to happen today. For those that are relieved, that's probably good news for you as well. But just wanted to be clear about that. So with that, let me open it up for any citizen comment. Is there any citizen comment on this item 2A? Sir, please. Yep. You know, if you want to just approach the podium and state your name and where you're from for the record, please.
I'm Richard Miller. I reside at 915 North Bluff Drive, Franktown, in the Bluffs. My property is one that joins this open space park property. And we, as the Bluffs, were quite shocked that a year and a half after this request started, we were given notice of a public hearing before the Commissioners. Now, you have in your packet a petition signed by all 11 owners in the Bluff, plus Nick and Rochelle Castanza and Sheila Peterson, who are the adjacent owners to the north of that park open space. Now, that was dedicated to the county in 1972 as public space. And we have fought incredibly hard to keep that. Now, the staff says that there was no improvements ever done to this space. Two years ago, the county did do fire mitigation and clear this space. And each of us owners in the Bluff enjoy this property. It's a bedding place for the deer. We see the turkeys there. It's an open space that we can walk around on. And I think probably the most shocking is that in light of Amendment 1A just having passed by eighty-some percent, that staff would consider selling this public property to a private owner, which we are definitely opposed to. That's not in keeping with 1A. That's not in keeping with our covenants in the Bluffs or with zoning regulations. Zoning says Franktown will be five acres or more. This acreage currently is 4.16 acres. Originally, when it was titled in 1975, it was 4.01 acres. And we definitely want to see it continue as a park open space. And the most surprising is that this gentleman wanted to buy this property when, a month and a half ago, Commissioners, you approved the Vista Hills subdivision, which was originally Jaggerman, where he has his option of six lots that are vacant, plus one lot that has an existing house on it, all of which are for sale. So I thank you for your time.
Thank you for being here with us, sir. Additional comment?
My name is Richard Linwood. I live on Camelot Drive, part of the Bluff subdivision. A lot could be said. I'll just cut to the quick. If it does come to a vote at some point in the future, I would kindly ask that you decline any changes. We like the open space. We do use it. I don't use it every day, even every week, but I don't walk my own acreage every day, every week, because I'm busy. But we do enjoy it. My wife and I spend time up there. So in summary, if it does come to a vote before the Commission, I would like to ask that you leave it as it is and not change it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for being with us. Additional citizen comment?
Yes, good afternoon. My name is John McKnight. I reside at 10694 Camelot Drive in Franktown. I'm an owner of Lot 8 in the Bluff subdivision, opposed to this proposed land disposal for several reasons. One is the size of the acreage. It's been originally plotted at 4.16. Without being redundant, it's now down to about 3.32 with the right-of-way for driveway to a lot to the north. So it's less than five acres required for rural residential zoning. And also, the sale of this to a non-resident owner, it'd be different if we were selling it to somebody adjacent to the properties. But to sell it to somebody outside of the Bluff subdivision, I'm opposed to the wholesale for that reason. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McKnight. Additional citizen comment?
Hi, my name is Rochelle Castanza. My husband's Nick Castanza, and my mother's Sheila Peterson. We reside at 985 North Bluff Drive. We are the property directly adjacent to the open space on the north side. We feel like building on that open space would affect us the most because that piece of property is very close to our house and in direct view of our house. And we also can hear everything going on because we are down a bit from Bluff, and the trees there block the sound and sights from the rest of the neighborhood. So we all feel like we're kind of private, and this would totally destroy that because we would be able to see and hear everything those neighbors do. And our driveway runs directly through that property onto Bluff. And so if that property was purchased, I don't even know how the logistics of that would work because it would be a shared driveway. And we are really concerned about the crowding and the noise. And all of us neighbors agree that we like the open space there. And there is now six parcels for sale directly behind that, which can be purchased. So we're not really sure why this person wants to kill the open space.
Thank you, Ms. Castanza. Additional citizen comment? Okay, do we have any citizen comment online, Troy?
Thank you, Commissioner. I have no online comment.
Okay. And with that, I'll close citizen comment and bring you back to the board for any further discussion and/or a mo-
Excuse me, Commissioner.
Oh, sorry. Yep.
Excuse me, Commissioner. I just had a hand raised, so I'm going to go ahead and unmute with your permission.
Sure.
Just came up late. Dalton Lyons, you are unmuted. Go ahead.
Hi, good afternoon. I was wanting to speak on public hearing Agenda A. Sorry.
Oh, thank you, sir. Looks like it was a different item, Commissioner. Thank you.
Okay, item 3A, not item 2A? Okay. Okay. And with that, I will close citizen comment and bring you back to the board for any further discussion and/or a motion.
I do have a question, Eric. So can you explain the difference between a continuance and tabling?
Eric Pavlenek for staff. Continuance would be to a date certain. At this time, a table would allow the applicant time and schedule at a future date, but there's no date certain, if, that's my understanding.
So he can still bring it forward, but he doesn't have to start the whole process all over again?
That is correct.
Is that correct?
If I may, another nuance. Tabling requires notice to go back out. So that's one of the big differences. A continuance, since it's to a date certain, there's no additional notice required because anyone who received the original notice will already know when to come to the next meeting. Since this is being tabled to a time uncertain, notice will have to be redone before this can be heard.
Thank you. I have no other questions.
Any additional questions, comments, or a motion?
Well, if it pleases the Board, I do have a motion to table the land disposal of the Bluffs, First Amendment, tract A1, project file MI 2021-010.
Second.
So there's a first and second on the floor. Any further discussion? Sign on. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
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 Aye, and that carries 3-0 for that item to be tabled. With that, we'll move on to item 3A, which is Meridian International Business Center Preliminary Plan Number 10, project file SB 2021-038. Eric Pavlenek presenting for staff.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Eric Pavlenek again for Brett Thomas for Planning Services. The project before you is Meridian International Business Center Preliminary Plan Number 10. The project number is SB 2021-038. Meridian MB Investments LLC is the owner, and Eric He Cox with Shea Properties is the project representative. The applicant proposes 137 residential lots, 12 tracts, and associated public roads and private alleys on 29.79 acres within the Meridian PD. The intent of the preliminary plan is to provide an in-depth analysis of the proposed subdivision, including a review of the design, considering the ability to obtain water and sanitation, identify geologic hazards, environmentally sensitive areas, wildlife habitat areas, source of required services, vehicular and pedestrian circulation, storm drainage and water quality, relationship to surrounding land uses, and performance with the master plan. The preliminary plan process begins with a submittal of an application. Following a review period by referral agencies and the public, there are public hearings before the Plan Commission and Board of County Commissioners. Correspondence was received from one adjacent business owner during the process, who had concerns regarding residential development within close proximity to his manufacturing facility. Letters were also received in support of the requests for residential uses in the area. All correspondence received are included in the staff report. The Plan Commission considered the applicant's request for approval at a public hearing on November 7th. The Commissioners' discussion focused on the material of the noise wall, maintenance of the noise wall, and ownership of the roads. An abutting business owner spoke and noted concerns with the residential development adjacent to his manufacturing business. The neighbor requested that future residents be provided with disclosures identifying the presence of industrial uses in the vicinity. The applicant agreed in concept to providing a disclosure, but noted that they would need to work with the future builder on specific language. Staff indicated that the disclosure methodology would be finalized during the final plat stage of review. Additional correspondence was submitted by the neighbor following the PC hearing and was included as an attachment to the staff report. The Plan Commission recommended approval of the preliminary plan, subject to the five conditions proposed by staff by vote of five to zero. The Commissioners recommending approval were satisfied that all approval standards had been met. The site is located in the northern portion of the county, near the interchange of E470 and I-25, as noted on the star on the slide. More specifically, the site is located within the Meridian PD, south of Highway E470 and north of Lansing Circle and Meridian Boulevard. The boundary of the Centennial Airport is located approximately 1,200 feet northeast of the site. As seen on this aerial, the property is bordered by E470 to the north. To the west of the site is the Cottonwood Creek, as well as a manufacturing facility, which is located north of Lansing Circle. An undeveloped but platted parcel is located south of Lansing Circle, and there's an existing office building to the east. The Meridian PD, inclusive of planning areas A, B, and C, was brought together as a unified PD in 2004. The Board approved the 50th Amendment to the Meridian PD in 2018, which established a process for the conversion of commercial square footage to residential units. In 2020, the 17th Amendment to the PD was administratively approved to increase the maximum permitted building height and reduce the minimum permitted lot area for residential development within this portion of Planning Area A of the PD. The applicant proposes 137 single-family residential lots on approximately 13.8 acres of the approximately 29.8 acre site. The growth density of the proposed subdivision is 4.6 dwelling units per acre. The applicant proposes a design, which includes approximately 10 acres in tracts, four acres of public right-of-way, and 1.8 acres of private streets. Tracks C and D are proposed to include park facilities. Noise mitigation walls and fences are proposed to mitigate noise from E470. Here's a view looking northeast into the site from Lansing Circle, near the proposed main access to the site. The American Family Insurance Building located east of the site is visible in the background. Here's a view looking northwest into the site from Lansing Circle. FW Manufacturing is visible in the top left of the photo. And Phil Dirt from the Compass Meridian Multifamily Project, which is west of Jamaica Street, is visible in the top right. And finally, a view looking west into the site from the American Family Insurance site. These are the approval standards for a preliminary plan, which are discussed in detail in the staff report. Most referral comments were standard in nature. More specific comments from the Arapahoe County Airport Authority and E470 Public Highway Authority were received. The Airport Authority stated it is strongly opposed to the proposed residential development and noted the proposed development lies within the, within its airport influence area. The Airport Authority recommended navigation easement for residential development. Per the Centennial Airport Review Area Overlay District in the county's zoning resolution, the site is not located within a safety zone or noise zone. As such, the CARA overlay district does not require a navigation easement or noise test, and there are no land use restrictions affecting the site. The E470 Public Highway Authority stated it discourages residential uses adjacent to the roadway and that the authority is not responsible for noise mitigation. Following conclusions of its aircraft and traffic noise assessment noise study, the applicant is proposing exterior noise mitigation in the form of noise fences and walls at or around individual residential outdoor use areas. The noise fences and walls will provide noise mitigation for the outdoor use areas from Highway E470 vehicle traffic. With the implementation of recommended residential construction techniques, including insulation, roofing, and exterior glazing, that meet a minimum sound transmission class rating of 32, the noise exposure within the interiors of residential structures will be less than 45 DNL or day-night average. The applicant has provided a written response to all referral comments. That is also included in the staff report. Should the Board find that the approval standards for the preliminary plan are met, the following proposed conditions should be considered for inclusion in its motion. Condition number one, prior to recordation of the final plat, the applicant shall will submit a signed copy of certification of allocation of unused dwelling units, as prescribed in section F.9.1e of the Meridian PD. Condition number two, prior to recordation of the final plat, the applicant shall provide a payment in an amount of $500 per single-family residential lot to the Douglas County School District for cash and lieu fees and capital mitigation. Condition number three, during construction activity within the development, the applicant, at success during a sign, shall take all reasonable care to watch for historic resources, paleontological resources, and other cultural history resources, and shall immediately notify Douglas County and complete a appropriate Colorado Office of Archaeology and Historic Preservation Data Management forms in the event of such discovery. Condition number four, Colorado Parks and Wildlife literature shall be made available to both perspective homeowners and home buyers regarding the existence of wildlife in the area and how to minimize conflicts. Condition number five, technical corrections to the record copy of the preliminary plan exhibit shall be made to the satisfaction of Douglas County. And condition number six, all commitments and promises made by the applicant representative during the public hearing and/or agreed to in writing and included in the public record have been relied upon the Board of County Commissioners. In approving the application, therefore, such approval is conditioned upon the applicant's full satisfaction of all such commitments and promises. Section 405.08 of the subdivision resolution sets forth the parameters of the Board's determination on the preliminary plan request, which is noted on the slide. This concludes my presentation. I'm available to take questions at this time. Public Works Engineering staff is also available for questions. Otherwise, the applicant representative, Eric He Cox, is here with a presentation.
Eric, thank you for that. Any questions for staff?
Eric, I do have one question.
Yes.
So you explained that the airport is opposed to this, but when I read through the packet, am I correct that it is not under the area that is called the CARA area?
That is correct.
Okay, I have no other questions.
Any other questions for staff?
No questions.
Okay, and I have none either. With that, if the applicant would like to approach and just state your name and where you're from for the record, please.
Great. All right. Well, thank you, and good afternoon, Commissioners. Thank you so much for having me here today. My name is Eric He Cox. I'm Senior Vice President with Shea Properties. Really appreciate the opportunity to be here with you today. We also have a number of members of our team that are here to help address any questions that you might have. With us are David Vasquez. He works with me over at Shea and has been heavily involved in this project. We also have Travis Frazier, who has worked on our engineering and our site plan. Curtis Rowe, I believe, is joining us virtually. He's our traffic consultant. Tom Raganetti is here. He's part of our legal team. Phil Workman is either here or on his way. Phil is here. He helps us with some of our public outreach. And then obviously can't forget the best-dressed IT guru in Colorado, Corey, who is here making sure that all of my stuff works. So appreciate, appreciate you having us. What we're here today, as staff talked about, is we're here to request preliminary plan approval for the Lansing community, and this is so that we can continue to implement the approved 2018 vision for Meridian. My presentation is about 25 minutes today. I hope you'll indulge me for that period of time. Plan to cover about five topics. Want to review Meridian's past development and the plan that you approved in 2018, our progress in implementing that plan, what's next for Meridian, which is why we're here today, which is the Lansing community. And then we'll also look at our outreach and our commitments to date, and then finally wrap it up with a summary of our request. So I want to start by taking a quick look back at the historical development in Meridian and how that led to the county-approved plan in 2018. It's been a little while since I've had the opportunity to be in front of you, so I wanted to take a little bit of time just to update you on all of the happenings in Meridian, as it's quite germane to what we're talking about here today and what we're requesting. So we all know and staff reviewed where Meridian is located, but here's a reminder. It's located in the northern part of Douglas County and the South Denver metro area. It is at the heart of the southeast business corridor, and Meridian is a key player in the future of northern Douglas County's business development. I'm going to walk through kind of a satellite visual recap of 30 years of development in this area. As the colors come on, just a reminder, the purple is the surrounding development around Meridian, and then within Meridian, the blue is new office development, orange is when residential developments occurred, and green is open space. residential developments occurred, and green is open space. So Meridian really got started in 1984, and the development began on the original Meridian land, which is shown here in the yellow outline. The Jack Nicholas-designed golf course was part of the original development, and then the first individual office buildings were completed in this timeframe. Over the next several years, Toyota Motor Systems opened their building, and in 1993, Guaranty National Bank, which later became Royal Sun Alliance, became the first office campus in Meridian. The late '90s brought additional office development. Merrill Lynch came into Meridian, later became Echo Star and Dish. Other buildings were also developed and brought Meridian's total office development to over a million square feet of commercial space. We also expanded the property with the addition of Meridian Commons to the south. And then importantly, in 2001, the Windsor Apartment Development was the first residential site, and that was located right down here in the orange, and that marked an evolution of the Meridian area from being a pure business park to a more mixed-use development. This first residential development was in direct response to requests from major employers, which was to have housing near businesses, and this is a theme that we first heard in the early 2000s, and it's a theme that is just as relevant here today. Then because more corporate tenants came in, such as CH2M Hill, which is now Jacobs, they developed their campus over here. Western Union, which is over in this area over here, developed, and that's now Sierra Nevada. As those were being added, nearby housing demands grew, and we know from our outreach that this demand is still a priority for many of Meridian's business tenants. Then by 2013, we were nearing capacity for the allowed residential units within the Meridian area. The market for office development had really slowed down, and Meridian was really essentially becoming an infill area, as you can see from the purple that had developed kind of all around it. And as we've talked about, the demand for housing in the area was continuing to increase. So in 2018, since office growth had plateaued and Meridian was in need of a new energy, we came to you with a new plan so that we could continue to do what was necessary to bring life into the area. In 2018, we presented you with this future vision for Meridian and Northern Douglas County and our mixed-use plan to achieve it. What we wanted to do was to attract new corporate campuses and commercial tenants, and we wanted to do that through a combination of refreshed infrastructure, doing mixed-use development that would attract residents and tenants, and new residential communities that would enhance the attractiveness of the area to corporate tenants. This here shows a map of what had been developed as of 2018, both the commercial and the residential as of that time period. The yellow shows the remaining areas that were the focus of our PD request in 2018, and the plan also included additional areas for parks and trails. Now, I'm going to just briefly step through with you the overall plan which led to the passing of the 15th Amendment. In 2018, we came to you and told you our plan for adding additional affordable housing up in this area. This was really in a response to the great success of the Apex West Project, which was done in 2012, which is here, and then we targeted this area for additional affordable housing projects. In 2018, we also talked about this light blue area here as being a focus for additional office campus development. The orange area, moving kind of west to east over here, we had targeted for industrial facilities and industrial development. In 2018, we also showed you our plans for additional residential development. They're shown here in purple in these two areas, and I'll highlight that at the time we talked about the area where the Lansing community is being discussed today, that was a target as part of our residential development at the time. And then at the time, we also talked about some focused areas for a little more intensive mixed-use area, really focused around the Lincoln Station Light Rail Site. These areas that are shown here in this aqua call-out were really intended to be a mix of office, retail, and residential. And then finally, in 2018, we talked about the remaining areas that are shown here in purple being available for dispersed office development. And in order to implement that plan that we laid out, we requested and you granted a PD amendment to add additional residential units to Meridian, and we showed you here in the red, the purple, and the aqua where we planned to use those additional residential developments, including at the Lansing site. And again, this was to address the need that Meridian businesses were telling us was a top priority for them, which is housing for employees near where they work. And as we do with all of our projects, at the time, we did significant outreach, we incorporated concerns of our partners, we responded to the business community's desire for more homes within Meridian, and because of this, Douglas County unanimously approved our request for the additional residential units. Since 2018, we've been really successfully executing on this plan and the vision, and I'll go through that and kind of talk about all of the progress that we've made over the past four years since you approved that plan in 2018. And I'll start by talking about our investments in refreshed infrastructure. A big component of the 2018 PD amendment was to allow for a revamped signage program. One of our first accomplishments was to re-energize Meridian by adding this new signage. You've probably driven up and down I-25. You've seen the lighted signs both on E-470 and I-25. They're much more visible from the highway. We also put significant resources into revamping the monument signage throughout the Meridian area. Also, one of our goals was to allow for better traffic flow, particularly north-south, both to the benefit of Meridian, as well as to help provide another north-south access besides the use of I-25. In partnership with Douglas County, the Jamaica intersection has been reconfigured, and work is nearly complete on the Havana intersection to the south. And I just want to say, these two projects have been led by Douglas County, and they've been a great partner, and we really thank you and your staff for our partnership on these road projects. We've also been committed to all types of connectivity and mobility from the start. Meridian became the first office park in Colorado to offer a bike-sharing program, and we recently revamped that program in partnership with Spin, which is a division of Ford, to add electric bikes and scooters into Meridian. We included about 24,000 linear feet of new trails in the 2018 plan, which you approved, and we've been chipping away at that. Over 2,000 linear feet have been constructed since 2018, and currently, we have about 4,000 that are under construction and will be fully delivered within the next couple of months. We're also making investments in new parks and a series of large outdoor fitness facilities. Currently, a three-acre park along Cottonwood Creek is under construction. It'll include a dog park, a fitness station, shade shelters, gathering spaces, trail corridors, and interpretive signage. It is, as I said, currently under construction and will be completed within the next few months. We've also completed two outdoor fitness facilities in and around Meridian. A third will be a part of this park that I was just talking about, and then we have two additional exercise facilities that are planned in the future. Water is certainly a big issue for all of Douglas County, all of Colorado, and water has always been at the heart of our plan to ensure that Meridian has a sustainable and secure water supply. Just as a reminder, for those of you that aren't intimately familiar with Meridian's water system, Meridian is a closed-loop water system where every drop of water within Meridian is recycled. Meridian's water system uses a combination of groundwater and surface water. We provide that water out to our customers as potable water. The sewer comes back to us. We treat that sewer flow to nearly potable standards, and then we send 100% of that back out through our reclaimed irrigation system, and the non-potable water is used to irrigate parks, open space, and the golf course. This is not a unique setup to Meridian, but what is unique is that many water providers do this with a portion of their water. Meridian does this with 100%, so 100% of our water is recycled. Also, as detailed in the staff report, the district's water resources and supply plan conforms with Douglas County Section 18A. Meridian has an adequate water supply not only for this plan that we're here talking about today, but also for its full build-out, and this has been confirmed both by the county as well as by the state's Division of Water Resources. And to ensure a secure water supply, we're continuing to make major investments in the water system. These have included interconnects with Parker, Inverness, and Denver Water, building additional infrastructure, and partnering in the WISE Project. Meridian was one of the original members of the WISE Project and has also had the opportunity to increase our WISE supply through the Douglas County option. And again, I want to thank you and the county for your foresight in securing this supply for the benefit of Douglas County residents. So that kind of sums up all the investments and progress that has been made in terms of refreshing infrastructure in and around Meridian. In addition to this refreshed infrastructure, we've also made a lot of progress since 2018 in implementing our mixed-use development plan. What we found is that as the office market has cooled, the industrial market has really boomed, and then that was put on at a huge acceleration with COVID, and the industrial market has just been taking off in this area. We've executed on our industrial plan with the completion of Amazon's new distribution hub, which is right up here in this area, and then we've also prepared the land that is north of there, north of Amazon, for future industrial uses, and we're evaluating other industrial uses in additional areas north of E-470. This here is a shot of the 147,000-square-foot Last Mile Distribution Center that was completed last year, and it is fully operational, and probably, as we speak here today, many of your Christmas presents are being delivered from this facility right to your front door.
How did you know?
In 2018, we also told you about our plan for affordable housing, and thanks to a great partnership with Douglas County Housing Authority, we've implemented on that plan. The first of two additional affordable communities that we talked about in 2018 came to fruition with Apex East, which is highlighted up here in the purple. We completed that project in 2021, and it has maintained an extremely long waiting list, all the way from when we first started construction all the way through completion. Still has a long waiting list today, and demand continues to grow. Based on those two successes, the third in our triad of affordable housing communities, Meridian Apex South, which is located right here along E-470, it is shown in the darker purple, that project has kicked off and is under construction, and it'll be completed by the end of the year, and these units are being leased and occupied within about two nanoseconds after we complete them. There just is a huge demand for this product, and the Apex, the three Apex projects have just been very well-received and have been extremely successful in meeting a very important need. We're also continuing to add diversity of housing into Meridian. This year, we started the Compass Meridian, which is shown over here in the purple with part of the regional trail going right through the middle of it. It is currently under construction, and this development will include 448 units. Of those, 380 are going to be apartments, 38 are townhomes, and 30 are carriage homes, and it'll be open early in the new year. So that kind of sums up and talks about the infrastructure investments that we've made, the progress that we've made in implementing our mixed-use plan. We've made tremendous progress in implementing this plan, and here in green is the land that is currently available for development within Meridian in order to keep implementing this plan, and of course, it includes the Lansing community, which we'll turn our attention to and is the subject of our application here today. So let's discuss this application that's in front of us. We've talked about, and I kind of went, hopefully, was helpful to go into all of the previous plan and the progress that we've made on it. We've talked about how the Lansing community was a part of that plan for Meridian in 2018. It's also important to note that it's consistent with Douglas County's long-term planning, which targets urbanization for the northern part of the county and designates Meridian, which is shown here kind of at the base of this little arrow, that it is appropriate for urban land use and kind of higher-density residential development. The Lansing community is also consistent with the region's economic development needs, which is to provide homes near where people work in order to help the businesses thrive and to reduce traffic congestion and the amount of time people have to commute going to and from work. Specific to the Lansing community, as noted in the staff presentation, we started the planning and the approvals for this project back in 2019. That was when the county approved the 17th PD Amendment. This amendment designated lot size and building heights in the Lansing area in order to provide for increased residential density. And now what we want to do today is just continue to move to the next step, which is your approval of the preliminary plan. So let's take a look at what we're proposing for this area. Here's a overall preliminary site plan. It includes 137 lots on approximately 30 acres. It's likely to be a mix of two- and three-story homes. These will be modern urban products, kind of in keeping with the county's urban plan for this area. And we're often asked what the price point will be for this type of a home. Even with the recent changes in the housing market, amazingly enough, the average price home in Douglas County is still nearly $750,000. We anticipate that these homes will be under that price point. The increased density should lead to a lower-than-average price point, but as we all know, the housing market is constantly in flux, so it's too early to know an exact price point. But what we do know is the basic tenants of market economics, which is if you increase the supply, it can't help but help to moderate overall prices in the area. Here's an entry plan for the Lansing community. We're proposing entrances that will be off of Lansing Circle in two locations that are indicated here, and then circulation will be throughout the community as a combination of public and private roads. This here shot shows you the park concept for the community. 33% of the site is going to be dedicated to parks and open space, and this will complement the other regional parks in the Meridian area. And then, of course, the county's tree requirements and landscaping requirements will all be met. Now, I want to turn my attention just briefly to looking at our ongoing commitments to Douglas County and the community, as spelled out in our PD, and then we'll also talk briefly about the outreach that we've done on this project. One of the commitments that we have in our PD, and was noted in the staff recommendations, is to track and certify the allocation of dwelling units in Meridian. This project is going to use 137 of our roughly 1,200 remaining dwelling units. Initial certification has been provided to staff, and final certification to this effect will be provided with the final plat. We've already talked about our parks, trails, and open space commitments and all of the progress that we've made in these areas. We have a very robust start on adding parks and building out our connected trail system, and these investments will continue over the coming years and provide great amenities to the residents and businesses throughout Meridian. Part of this project included modifying the floodplain. I'm pleased to report that FEMA recently approved our CLOMER. This is one of the oddest acronyms in the history of acronyms. It's a CLOMER, which stands for Conditional Letter of Map Provision, and we now have one of those, and so we're off and running on the floodplain modifications. As with any development, of course, traffic is always one of the greatest concerns. The original development plan for Meridian, when this area was first contemplated, included the 30 acres of this Lansing site, was basically envisioned to be about 900,000 square feet of office space on this site, and showed here what that traffic modeling showed in terms of generating traffic and people in the area. It generated a significant amount of traffic. Then when we came to you with the 15th Amendment that was approved, we re-looked at this area as we talked about it being residential. We modeled it to include about 350 units. This was a huge reduction in traffic, about a 77% reduction in traffic volume, as well as the number of people that would be in and around the area. And then with the proposal that we have in front of you today, the Lansing residential proposal now includes 137 homes, and the result was a further 38% decrease in the people that are around in the area and the traffic. Therefore, this proposed project results in less people and less traffic, and the surrounding road network can easily handle the volume, and this proposal also provides an opportunity for people to live closer to their place of employment, hopefully further reducing regional traffic. Then, of course, as noted in the staff report and presentation, a big part of the planning for this community related to environmental noise mitigation. The applicable standards for this site are detailed in the PD. The PD requires that development and construction techniques ensure a 45 DNL inside and a 65 DNL outside. There are really two main sources of noise coming onto this property. There's background noise from E-470 in the airport, and there's also noise originating from our neighbor FW Manufacturing that's being received onto the property. We completed a noise mitigation study and designed the community to meet and exceed both the indoor and the outdoor sound requirements that are in the PD to ensure compliance inside the homes. Staff went through this, but I'll just repeat it briefly. briefly. We'll use techniques including enhanced exterior walls, extra insulation in the attics, exterior glazing, all of that that'll further reduce noise levels inside the home. Then our plan will also provide for a 65 DNL outside rating. We'll do this by using a combination of aesthetically pleasing sound barriers, berms, and building locations. The sound barriers that are depicted here in yellow, and the ones that are here in yellow are the locations that are called for and required by the sound study. However, we're also going to go above and beyond what is required by the sound study and include what is shown here in the green. The green depicts where we will add additional sound barriers that are not required but are intended to further mitigate the sound generated from our neighbor, and will also provide a privacy barrier that separates the two properties. Then finally, when it comes to noise, it's important to note that the developed lots are outside of the airport 65 DNL zone. So the location of the development and our sound mitigation measures will meet and exceed all of the noise requirements for this site, and this has been confirmed by the county's noise consultant. Then also, speaking of the airport, and there was a question by Commissioner Thomas about the airport, our team has met with the airport on a number of occasions to discuss this project and to accommodate their concerns to the extent possible. And of course, apart from not developing on the site at all, we're able to address the comments that were raised by the airport. We're in full compliance with the approved uses for this site because single-family residential is a use that is permitted by right at this location. We also are in full compliance with the requirements as they're spelled out in the Douglas County zoning, as well as in the Meridian PD. We will make, ensure that all of the construction complies with airport height restrictions, sound mitigation, safety zones, navigation easements, and disclosures. So now let's turn our attention briefly to the outreach that we've done on this project. This site only has a few direct neighbors, but as we do with all of our projects, we started discussions with them early on. And in doing our due diligence with neighboring businesses, we found that American Family Insurance had no comments, and we were able to address the few questions that they had. FW Manufacturing is our other direct neighbor. This building was originally constructed as a medical manufacturing facility. As mentioned earlier, we're now, as new developments like this come on directing those uses north of E470. So this facility is a little bit of an outlier, but nonetheless, it's there and is our neighbor, and we've been meeting with them regularly to try and accommodate their concerns. Specifically, they asked for, and we were able to accommodate, a number of their requests. As mentioned earlier, a sound burial will be constructed to contain the noise that they generate, and that'll be at our expense and on our property. Access to the Lansing community will be provided away from the property. And then also, in order to separate the two properties and try and minimize people crossing between the two uses, property, birmingham, landscaping, and fencing will be installed. And then, as also discussed, we will provide disclosures to prospective homeowners and homebuyers regarding the existence of a manufacturing facility next door. And then, as was mentioned in the staff report, we discussed a planning commission that the specific disclosure methodology will be finalized during the final plat stage of the review. So we've been meeting frequently, and we'll continue our good working relationship with FW Manufacturing. So in summary, we've met all of our commitments. We've consulted with E470, the airport, both of our neighbors, FEMA, and the metro district. We've done extensive outreach. There's a lot of excitement about this project. We feel we've addressed all of the referral comments, including being in full compliance with the established airport requirements, and we're working through the concerns of our neighbor. Also, as detailed in the staff report, the site has excellent services for this type of proposed plan. And as the staff report spells out, the preliminary plan conforms with the county's goals, objectives, and policies. It meets all of the county requirements. Staff has recommended a few conditions, and we are in agreement with them. And after having met all of these conditions, staff is in full support, and the planning commission unanimously approved the plan. So I'll just conclude here with our request. We're excited to bring a new residential neighborhood to northern Douglas County. We believe that the application addresses a need that Meridian businesses tell us is vital to them, which is housing for employees near where they work at a price that they can afford. And we believe that the Lansing community will allow Meridian and northern Douglas County to continue to thrive. So today, we're simply asking for approval to continue implementing the plan that we laid out in 2018 and have successfully been executing on over the past four years. Therefore, we respectfully request your approval of the preliminary plan for the Lansing community. And I thank you for your time, and my team and I are here and happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Great, thank you so much for that. And I just wanted to confirm, it looked like you had five conditions presented. I have six in the packet. Is it five or six?
That's correct, it's six. The sixth one was added between planning commission and this, and it was that whatever commitments I make here today verbally will also be a condition.
Okay, and just for the record, you're okay with all of those conditions?
Certainly.
Okay, thank you. Well, thank you for that presentation. Let me open it up to the Board of County Commissioners for any questions or comments.
I don't have any. I just want to say that you went through it very thoroughly, and you did it so well, I don't have any questions, other than the first one I asked about the airport requirement. So thank you.
Great.
Additional questions?
No questions. Comment at this time is Doug. Now that's a PowerPoint presentation. Well done, well crafted.
Thank you.
You saw a lot of good PowerPoint today, including from Commissioner Teal. So I do sit on the Centennial Airport Authority, and I often hear about issues associated with new development and the concerns on the inside when people are living in residences, and then we get complaints about noise. I am not a fan of restricting land use, and I am a big property rights proponent. I think that's why we have zoning, and you know, I'm not in favor of telling property owners what they should do with their property. I'm also a fan of people being able to purchase properties where they see fit. Yes, it's close to an airport. Yes, it's close to 470. I think we've heard very clearly from both of those entities, but I'm a greater fan of the free market determining where people want to build and where people want to live. That said, my only caveat to that is proper notice. So ensuring that throughout the process, all stakeholders are very clear about what they are buying, and so there's no surprises at the end. I think what I heard is that, well, certainly saw the correspondence in the packet on page 93 from the airport, and then the responsive correspondence from the firm. It sounds as though you will be providing information at closing with regard to noise. Can you talk to me a little bit more about your willingness to include an navigation easement or any sort of marketing materials in advance of closing?
Yeah, certainly. So a couple pieces to that. In terms of the navigation easement, all of Meridian and this property is already subject to an navigation easement that's in place, and that will remain in place throughout the whole transaction. So we're certainly not opposed to that, and have spoken with the airport about that of that there is an navigation easement in place, and that will be part of the record and part of the property as it gets transferred to homebuyers.
Good, okay.
And then, we've also spoken with the airport at length about the disclosures. We've done disclosures in the past. Anytime we've done residential development within Meridian, and we try very hard to work with our homebuilder partners to make sure that those disclosures aren't just included in the packet and maybe one of, you know, 50, 60 pages worth of information that they get, but that it's also included on marketing material and all of that.
Good.
And we'll continue to work with our prospective homebuilders to ensure that that happens. We're all better off and protected if people are going into it with their eyes wide open, and exactly as you said, then they can make their own choices as to what's the best place for them to make a home.
Well, I greatly appreciate that. I mean, that was a remarkably well-presented application, so it's nice to see all of the homework that was done in advance. And I would agree with you, I think there's a lot of excitement in our community around this particular development, and you've already established a phenomenal track record. Love seeing the recycled water and, you know, 100% use, as well as the parks and trails for bikes and some of the new innovative programs you have for the area. I think it's really consistent with the needs of that community, which is my district. So let's jump to just noise in general, and I think we talked a little bit about the DNL and the average, you know, noise that a resident might hear. I think what I often hear at the airport authorities around construction materials, window panes that are a little bit thicker and, you know, mitigate some of that sound, other construction materials. It appears as though you're implementing all of that, and you're trying to really leverage new building materials that would limit sound, as well as berms and barriers. Anything more on that that might assuage residents or the airport around noise?
Yeah, I mean, I think a couple things I can say is we're working, you know, on all of our developments to make sure that we're making it as pleasing of an environment as possible. Certainly, on the indoor side of things, we've implemented on our apartment projects, you know, basically the whole laundry list of things that you can do. I recently went and toured our affordable housing project, Apex South, that I pointed out, that is literally right on E470. And you stand in one of the prime three-bedroom units that we have, and it looks out, and has the most magnificent view, but of course, with that comes that you're right by the highway. You can see the trucks and everything going by, and you hear almost none of the noise inside. So it's really a remarkable thing that they can do inside the home. And our partner homebuilders are doing all the same things. They want to make sure that it's an attractive product for prospective homebuyers. Outside the home is also where there's, you know, less technology, but you can use a lot of techniques in terms of the birmingham, the elevations, the noise barriers in order to really mitigate that. And again, I've been in touring a number of these projects that we've put in place. I've been surprised at how you can be in one area, you hear a fair bit of the background noise, and then you go into another area that is really meant for the outdoor living spaces and community gathering spaces. And the positioning of the buildings, the birmingham, and all of the site planning that we have done really reduces that noise level. So I'm confident that we can meet those, and I know the, I've spoken with the airport staff at length, I know that they have a pretty huge workload of having to respond to noise complaints, and I'm certainly sympathetic to that. And can't say that there won't be any noise complaints, but we're certainly willing to do everything that we can to make it as pleasing an environment as we can and do as much environmental noise mitigation as possible.
Well, thank you for that. And I think technology can be our friend on the airport side. I know that improving the technology of the prop planes can also limit some of the noise that people are experiencing. So I'm really pleased to hear that that open dialogue is occurring with the airport. Our county, I think, is known for regional collaboration, and keeping that door open to partner well, I think, benefits all of us. So thank you for continuing to speak with them. You know, my last area of interest is probably the toughest, and you touched on it briefly. We often speak to workforce housing and affordable housing. When we get ranked for healthiest county in the state and in the nation, our, where we get dinged is on affordable housing, which isn't bad. A lot of people want to live here, to your point, average price point is 700 to 750. That said, I'm not sure I heard a specific answer on price point, and maybe you don't have that exactly. Do you have a general range on average price point?
Yeah, I don't. We're still, you know, we're still working with prospective homebuyers and, or homebuilders and exactly what product they would build. And as I said, I think it's going to be a mix of both two-story and three-story. So I unfortunately don't have kind of an exact price point or even a price range, but what we worked very hard to do is to design an area that would allow a homebuilder to be able to do it on a way that meets their business model, but also results in housing that is below the area average. That's kind of what we've been targeting, and of course, that average, as well as the price that the homebuilder builds for, will fluctuate with the overall market.
Well, thank you. And I really am reluctant to monkey around with the free market. I think when government does that, it's usually a mistake. That said, it's really important to me that veterans and first responders and teachers, and even hospitality and retail workers can live where they work in Douglas County, because it's a traffic solution. If you're commuting from Lakewood and Aurora to get to Douglas County, that clogs up our roads. So I think there is a real benefit to having a diverse housing stock that is more workforce housing and affordable for those that work in Douglas County. Optimistically, I'm hopeful that at least there's a few residences that will be below that average for first responders and veterans to be able to buy places. But it sounds like more to come on that front. I'm going to not keep my fingers crossed, we know how, what high demand it is in Douglas County to live here. I don't have any additional questions. Any other questions or comments from the board? Okay. Okay. Singnan, let me open it up for citizen comment. Is there any citizen comment, either in person or online? Yes, sir.
My name is Bruce Devine, and I am the owner of FW Manufacturing. And I appreciate the opportunity to address you this afternoon. You know, kind of a little bit like the airport, we would prefer that this project not be approved in terms of having all of the houses surrounding our manufacturing facility. But if it is, I do want to say that I believe that Shay has demonstrated really tremendous experience and skill as a developer, and they've worked so professionally and so collaboratively with us that I think it's worth mentioning, because in these kinds of situations, I think that doesn't always happen, and I certainly appreciate it. Also, Brett here at the county has been very helpful to me, because this is a new process for me, and he's kind of shown me the road to go down and how to address this, and I appreciate his help very much in that regard. As this project is being judged for approval, and perhaps likely to be approved, I think the most key thing for me, and it's come up in a lot of this conversation, is the disclosures for homebuyers and what they must acknowledge and what they must be aware of in terms of our manufacturing facility, which is not just noise, it's all the things you would expect from a busy manufacturing facility. There's odors, there's noise, there's truck traffic, there's all of those kinds of things. And so this, I think to me, slightly different than a place you're renting, this is a place, a home you're buying, and we certainly don't want to have a misunderstanding with the HOA or a group of homeowners that might be around our facility five years from now when this all gets done. And so it's important to us and for the future of our workforce, and we employ about 100 people, and we believe that we will be aggressively increasing our ranks as we go forward, that doesn't become a business distraction. And Shay has expressed their agreement and understanding that these disclosures are very important, just like with the airport. But the devil is in the details about what those disclosures say and how they're presented, I think really very much like with the airport. And so what I would like to request for the protection of our company and for the idea of eliminating misunderstandings with everybody, is that the disclosures that I presented, I submitted to the county, and I have them with me if you'd like to see it, but I know it's in your package. Our legal counsel wrote up what they saw as appropriate disclosures as it would relate to a purchase contract and as it would relate to recorded declarations. And so I don't know if the county really can get into specifying exactly what should be said in a disclosure. I would like that, I would request that. But if they can't, my request really would be that the intent of what we're trying to achieve with this disclosure, the absolute elimination of misunderstanding of what a homebuyer is going to be living by, that that somehow be articulated in these disclosures and acknowledged by every homebuyer in every possible way. So I appreciate your consideration of that and taking the time to listen to my thoughts. Thank you very much.
Sir, thank you for being with us today. We appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Additional citizen comment? Yes, sir.
My name is Greg Kelly. I live at 9301 Scrub Oak Drive in Lone Tree, Colorado. And if I get distracted, listen to my own voice, I apologize. Some of you recognize me, Commissioner Layden and Commissioner Thomas, from my involvement with the Denver South EDP and with the Southeast Public Improvement Metro District. But I'm not here to speak on their behalf, I'm here as a citizen of Douglas County and to express my support for this development. As Eric pointed out, Denver South commissioned a corridor study in 2016 that indicated 75,000 new employees in the corridor within the next 30 or so years. If all those people are commuting from Castle Rock or Parker or some other distant location, that is going to have a huge impact on our transportation infrastructure. And the recommendation of the study was that we really need a lot more residential units within the corridor, close to where people work and play. So that's really... So that's really the reason that I support this project, just to keep it simple. And then Shay, again, has a great track record for quality development, and I'm sure this one will also be an asset to the community and an asset to Douglas County. However, on a personal note, I would like to thank each and every one of you Commissioners for what I suspect is somewhat thankless job. There are more problems than solutions, and there are more opinions about the solutions from everybody in the world. The country is very divisive right now, and the political rhetoric is unbelievable. I would encourage you all to find some common ground, to continue to do the good work that you guys are doing on behalf of the citizens of Douglas County. Thank you very much for your service.
Well taken, sir. Thank you for being with us and sharing those thoughts. Additional citizen comment? Okay. Troy, do we have any citizen comment online?
Commissioner, I do have Dalton Lyons waiting.
Okay.
Dalton, you're unmuted. Go ahead, sir.
Hi, good afternoon, Commissioners. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Dalton Lyons. I work in the Meridian Business Park for D.R. Horton, DHI Communities, at 9561 South Kingston Court. And my wife and I are also homeowners here in Douglas County. I wanted to speak today and provide support for Shay Properties and this proposal, which is just north of our office. D.R. Horton and DHI is also a real estate developer and builder, and we oftentimes pursue and compete for the same development opportunities as Shay. But we're proud to support a diversity of housing options for the vibrant workforce in Douglas County, and that's why we're supporting this proposed project located within the business park north of Lansing Circle. This proposal will certainly bring amenities and greater convenience to what is recognized as a private business location, and it will supply a valued complementary residential use. This development will provide an attractive option for both my family and others to live within proximity of our workplace, plus all the other amenities here in Northern Douglas County. Shay's proposal for the Lansing community is especially significant because it provides a much-needed increase of below-average-priced, single-family residential options for the neighborhood and the area. So I ask that you please provide support today for this very appealing proposed use and the greater viability that it will bring to both this center and Douglas County. Again, I appreciate you providing me time to speak and for your consideration.
Great. Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comment. Troy, any additional comment online?
I have no additional online comment, sir.
Okay. And with that, I will close citizen comment and bring it back to the board for any further discussion and/or emotion.
Well, how often do you have an application where we have both a condition that requires Colorado Department of Wildlife, wildlife information, be distributed to homeowners, as well as disclaimers from business owners who are adjacent? This is very different than what we usually deal with. We've got some folks from Franktown here. This is almost as about as far away from the issue that you guys came before us for today as you can get. And one of the things that... There's a lot of talk always about, well, let's match residents with jobs. What can we do? And for a lot of us here in Douglas County, we made very different decisions. We made decisions to live probably very far away from our job. We'd made decisions to live in places that are isolated from our jobs. Although I am a veteran who lives and works in the same place.
Nice.
This is really great work in many ways on behalf of Shay to, you know, obviously, anybody who's been here for the last 20 years has seen that development that was articulated by Shay as part of the development. And in many ways, this is what smart planning looks like. Good job on the water situation. I think we've had an appreciation for the Meridian Water District for quite a while, just due to the fact that otherwise, you know, we know that this is something we often struggle with when it comes to development. But the overriding issue here is actually, yeah, building, you know, jobs were provided through past development. And now the residents who will fill those jobs are being provided for in this development. And Mr. Devine, I do understand your concerns, and mostly because it is very different than the situation that normally comes before this board, where we have businesses that wish to go in to areas that have, in the past, been, you know, residential. And so we do have an appreciation for it. And again, what makes this unique is, you know, it is common practice here in the county that residents do get those instruction materials pertaining to wildlife. And so for your concerns, I do think that is something that can be addressed. We think we have heard and willingness. Can't promise you word for word for what your attorneys have drafted up in terms of information for the new residents, but it does sound like you have a willing partner here willing to work on it. So personally, I've been on Dr. Cog now for eight years, and it's, the mantra is always, what are you doing with land use planning to pair jobs with residents, to put people where the jobs are, to make sure that we do get cars off I-25, cars off I-70, cars off 470. Personally, I find this to be a refreshing plan in that all of those concepts have been taken into account. And so, if it pleases the board, I do have a motion to...
I'm sorry. Can I make a comment?
Well, hang on a second. I've got a, you will have a chance to have a comment once I make a motion.
I was going to ask for the developer to have the opportunity to reply to citizen comment. I don't know that it's appropriate to do that after a motion.
What we'll do is I'll accept the motion and second it, and then in discussion, if there's a question for the applicant, I will allow the applicant to respond. Or do we?
Chair, as a point of order, the typical process would be after public comment to allow the applicant a chance to respond to anything that they may need to. That's the typical process we follow. Under Roberts' rules, I believe, once the motion is before you, that would be, it would only be appropriate at that point to have them comment on the motion itself, once the motion is before you, unless you were to set it aside and then have them comment, which would be a complicated process. It might be easier to just have them, if there's anything they want to address in regards to the public comment, have them do that first and then do the motion.
Okay. Well, thank you, Attorney Pratt. So let me just ask the applicant if there's anything that the applicant would like to respond to in terms of citizen comment.
Great, thank you. I don't have any specific responses. We'll obviously continue to work with Bruce and FW Manufacturing on the exact wording and continuing to be a good neighbor, and appreciate the comments that were made in terms of Shay's record and history, as well as the need for this type of a project in the area. So thank you very much.
Thank you. So returning to Commissioner Teal's motion.
Well, if it pleases the board, I do have a motion to approve Meridian International Business Center Preliminary Plan Number 10, because it does meet all the approval criteria with six conditions as presented. Project file is SB 2021-038.
Second.
So there's a first and second on the floor. Is there any further discussion at this time? Okay. Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that carries 3-0. Congratulations. With that, we'll move to our final item on today's agenda, which is Item 3B, a resolution supplementing the 2022 adopted budget to appropriate unanticipated grant revenues and appropriate restricted assigned and unassigned fund balances in the amount of $39,93,331. Kim Hirsch presenting for staff. Hi, Kim.
Hi. Good afternoon. I'm Kim Hirsch for the Budget Staff. I would like to formally present the final supplemental for fiscal year 2022. The total amount that is being requested for your consideration today is $39,93,331. This supplemental will be increasing appropriations for new revenues that have been received since the formal budget adoption and appropriate fund balance for various new initiatives. The, with this appropriation, the 2022 amended budget for Douglas County will be $646,765,410, which is a 26.4% increase from the 22 adopted budget. Within the board's packets, I've included all the fund summaries, which will demonstrate how the requested appropriations will be spent and managed within each specific fund, as well as the documentation on each individual request. Colorado Revised Statute 29-1-109 provides the ability for local governments to amend the budget throughout the year as necessary. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have, but all the documentation for the supplemental should be in the board's packet.
Great. Thank you for that. Kim, any questions for Kim?
Kim, I read through the packet. A lot of good work there, and you are down one with Louis being gone, so thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Any additional Commissioner comment or questions?
Oh, no questions. Good work on compiling the source, Kim. Good work on tracking it all in, because we know how we've got money flowing in, we've got money flowing out, and at the same token, we do need to bring these forward as amendments. So, well done.
Thank you.
Great job, Kim. And I see Martha Marshall in the back as well. Thank you, Martha. Appreciate everything. With that, let me open it up for any citizen comment. Is there any citizen comment, either in person or online, with regard to this item?
Commissioner, I have no online comment.
Okay. And I don't see any in the room, so I'm going to go ahead and close citizen comment and bring it back to the board for any further discussion and/or emotion.
I have a motion to approve a resolution supplementing the 2022 adopted budget to appropriate unanticipated grant revenues and appropriate restricted, assigned, and unassigned fund balances in the amount of $39,93,331.
All right, we'll second.
So we have a first and second on the floor. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that carries 3-0.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Kim. So our next land use meeting and public hearing will be held on Thursday, December 15th, 2022, at 2:30 PM. We are adjourned. Thank you very much.